To stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. And welcome to the January 30th, 2018 county commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need listening devices, you can talk to Craig who's in the front. And I know everyone in the room and I don't think anyone needs a listening device, so we are good to go. Okay, routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. And a motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2018 for item A, the commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And item B is the joint minute, joint meeting minutes from the Minnehaw County and the city of Sioux Falls meeting.
Move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $1,412,731.80. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Second.
A motion is second. Are there any comments on the bills? I would just make one comment. There were some very expensive expert witness bills this month. And we continue to deal with that. Obviously, we want to have good representation of our clients, but it is disheartening to see how expensive it is. So. I have a motion is second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for December 2017. And that's on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion is second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. Item A is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish notice of public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance to be held on February 20th, 2018 at or after 9:00 a.m. at the meeting of the Minnehaw County Commission. Kevin, good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As was just stated, this is the first reading for a rezoning of approximately 13.2 acres of a parcel located approximately half mile southwest of the city of Crooks. This is going to be from A1 Agricultural District to the Hope Harbor Plan Development District. And the primary purpose for this is to allow dwellings to be constructed and to be used as group homes. Staff is requesting that a hearing date be set on February 20th of 2018.
Any questions for Kevin? Commissioner Karski?
I know this didn't pass on the planning commission with unanimous vote, but just curious, where would I go to take a look at how a plan development is defined within our ordinance?
The ordinance does have an entire section that's just devoted to plan developments. And I believe it's section number 10?
Is it something you can email to me?
Yep, I can email that to you.
I'd just like to read how a plan development is defined, what it allows, and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
Because if something would change and this is no longer going to be used for what its intent is right now, what could happen down the road in a plan development is what I'm curious about.
Sure. Just kind of a basic overview is a plan development is a way for a developer to define their own developing rules based on a larger plan. That way, if the setbacks of the county doesn't work quite right, they can adjust the setbacks. They can adjust the height regulations, that sort of thing, to meet their needs as a developer. And they can also adjust what uses are going to be allowed in development, whether it's single-family housing or if it's commercial type uses or specific use for that location.
So can there be conditions put on a plan development?
There can be. So as a plan development, you're adjusting the ordinance and you can adjust the, how that plan development reads. So yeah, you can add and subtract from the proposed development reading.
Okay, thank you. Please email that to me.
Yep.
Any other questions for Kevin? They need a motion.
Move to set the date of hearing for, is it February 20th?
Yes, it is. A second then. A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, DPNO number 61587 in the amount of $764.40. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. This DPNO represents court-appointed attorney fees in a juvenile case. It represents file receipt number 701246. This lien was recorded in error under the name of Fletcher. It should have been recorded under the name of Felcher. And it actually is recorded correctly in the name of the juvenile's parent, primary parent, and also in the name of Felcher several, a couple of times. In looking into additional liens related to this incident here, there are multiple liens also with the name of Felcher and the primary parent, and I believe the grandparents as well. The petitioner has no knowledge of these individuals or this circumstance.
Any questions for Melinda? Commissioner Karski?
As a citizen, how would I know if a lien is placed against me? Like in this circumstances, individual, did they discover it on their own?
Well, there's two, two instances where they typically discover this. One is if an individual is buying or selling a home, it'll come up during the title search. And that's usually when we're trying to crunch and help them either have the lien compromised or reduced or something. The other is the auditor's office typically sends out a notice statements every year at the beginning of the year. And that's the other period when we get a lot of people coming in, you know, saying that they were unaware or don't recall it, or it's, you know, something that just occurred a while back.
So is the only way to remove this lien? I mean, this is obviously mistaken a correction. The only way to remove it is to come to us.
At this time, yes, unless we have that changed in the future.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the compromise.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additional questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you very much.
Next is opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Good morning, Pam.
Good morning. I came up today because recently Councilwoman Staley asked me if I could write an article about taxes for her newspaper that she, newsletter that she puts out. And I've had quite a few calls after people read in that newsletter about a program that the treasurer's office administers. It's called the Elderly and Disabled Property Tax Assessment Freeze. Doesn't really freeze your taxes, but it freezes the assessed value of your property for taxing purposes only by establishing a base year. Your base year would be whenever you were 65 or disabled. It's income-based, so you have to apply for it every year. You have to have been a resident of South Dakota for at least a year. You have to live on the property for which you're requesting the freeze 200 days out of the year. And you have to meet these income guidelines. For a single-income household, the guideline would be $27,697 a year. And for a combined-income household, that would be $34,622 a year. If you meet those requirements, then you would be eligible for that program. So we also have an, there's also the op, well, if you apply for this and you meet the criteria, it's a done deal. We send the notices up to the equalization office and they levy taxes accordingly. But there's also a way for people who weren't aware of the program for a long time to at least ask for one-year abatement. And so those people have to meet all those other criteria, be a resident for a year, live there 200 days out of the year, meet the income guidelines. And then, but that process is, it has to go to the city council for approval and then it comes back to the county commission for approval. And then in that abatement, we're asking for a specific amount of tax relief, which would be, that amount would be the amount that was determined after you met the income guidelines and they determined your base year. So I thought that, we have about, last year we have had 475 people on that program. In 16, we had 462. And when I came, maybe I think in 19, or 2004, we had about 200 people. So I was, apparently that legislation got passed in about 1985, which was prior to my service in the legislature, so I wasn't aware of it either until they started coming in. And so then I thought if I didn't know it, then a lot of other people don't know it either. So then we put it on your tax bill. There's a little thing about the middle of the tax bill that says something. If you're 65 years old or older or disabled, you may be eligible for tax assistance. And so it's increased our numbers significantly. I think it's a great program. It allows people to stay in their houses instead of be homeless and on the street. And so I think it's a win for us and a win for them. So I just thought maybe by telling you today, somebody else might hear about it and we might get some other people who would be deserving. Because if you think about the population in Sioux Falls, and we have a pretty significant concentration of elderly people, there probably are quite a few more people out there that would be eligible for that program but aren't aware of it. So thank you for your time today. Any questions?
Commissioner Barth?
No, go ahead.
Pam, there is a deadline where you're supposed to apply for it, but being 66, I often forget things. So how, what happens if you've forgotten or?
That's where the, well, the deadline, you can apply everywhere, every year between January 1st and March 30th. And then after that, that's when the abatement thing would come in. And so it's not totally going back for, if you missed it, if you're 90 and you didn't apply since you were 65, that isn't going to work. But there is that one year that it could help you out.
And you have to apply every year, right?
Yes, because it's income-based. And then those guidelines look to me like they go up a little, the, oh, the other criteria, and it's big. $190,122 is, your property can't exceed that in value. That's a pretty important part, too.
Commissioner, did you have a comment?
Well, I was going to say similar things to what Jeff's already brought up. We get numerous calls every year and we publish the application in our newspaper and tell that to everybody on an annual basis. But by far the biggest concern and question is the fact that they don't understand, in most cases, that they need to do it every year. They think after you've applied and been approved, you're automatically approved forever. And that doesn't work that way. So I know you've worked hard at trying to enhance communication and we have too, but somehow we're probably going to have to do a separate mailing at some point besides the tax notice to let people know about that because it, I don't know that people pay attention to all that fine print, if you will. And I think that's something that we'll have to work on.
It's been our experience that most of the people who learn about it are really looking at it when they read their tax bill to see how much there is. So that's been quite helpful. But like I said, there are a lot more people that might qualify for that program. And I think it's a win for us and a win for them. So I appreciate the opportunity that you have to help us out too. Since Senior Citizen Center is a great place. We tell everybody very carefully, oh, and then we, when we send, if you applied before, we send you the next year an application so that you'll get your application in the mail. And that's our way of reminding them that you have to do this again. Oh, and this is how they compute income, too. The, they take your adjust, if you file a tax return, and you also have to provide proof of income with your application. So if you file a tax return, they take your adjusted gross income from your taxes and add it to your gross social security. And if you don't file a tax return, then you have to bring, like if you have an IRA or a pension, your 1099, you have to bring your social security statement of income benefit form, the SSA 1099. You also have to bring any interest statement showing, like my bank sends it out once a year at the end of December. They show me what I got for the year. Some don't do that. Some send you, then you'd have to have 12 bills if you don't get a summary like bill from your, your bank.
As long as we're making paid political statements here, and it's not. But we also do tax returns for individuals who qualify and that's done by volunteers. But the other thing that we also do is Part D prescription drug reviews when people's prescriptions change, their income levels change. And all of that gets so complicated on occasion. I think that the reason the rules change all the time is we make it confusing so people just are frustrated. So if there's anything that we can do to help you with that process, to be able to let more people know what's going on, we make tons of mailings every year to lots of people.
Well, I couldn't say 100% of the people applying for this program get their taxes done out at the senior center with, from the volunteers, but most of them do. So that's a valuable service for them.
Yeah, we do over 3,000 tax returns and we probably do somewhere around 7,000 prescription Part D reviews plus help people with the real estate issues. So occasionally, all those applications get confusing and the timeframes.
It'd be nice if your people knew about this program, and I'm not sure they all do.
No, they don't.
But they do a really wonderful service for these people in helping them prepare their taxes. And like I said, a large portion of the tax returns that we see have been done by the volunteers.
Commissioner Barth has another comment.
Well, two things. First of all, when Gerald says "we," you should know that he's talking about the Center for Active Generations, not the county commission.
Not the commission.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Good point.
Doing your taxes, okay? The other thing is Pam, Teresa Staley's newsletter apparently reached different people, huh? Because you got?
Apparently it reached a lot of people.
That, that?
And she publishes it at her own expense, so it's not tax dollars.
But it came, people called you based on what they?
I had at least 15 people mention that they'd seen that article. And it just, they called the inquiry about the program then.
Thanks, Pam. Wealth of information, and this obviously was another venue to get the word out and I think we're trying.
So thank you so much.
Yeah. And I actually read Teresa Staley's. Jeff sent it to me, so I saw it too and it was a good article.
That was actually a pretty impressive newsletter.
She did a nice job.
Pretty impressive. People wrote articles for that story.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
What else? That wants to speak for public comment? Okay, that will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider application for the special on-sale liquor license for TNT Entertainment LLC for an event on March 2nd, 2018 at the Blue Haven Barn. Olivia?
Yes. As you said, TNT will be providing liquor at an engagement party on March 2nd, 2018 at the Blue Haven Barn. And they've submitted the special event on sale liquor license. And I have not received any concerns or complaints from sheriff's department, state's attorney, or planning and zoning.
Okay. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this? Liquor license. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second. A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is authorize a chairman to sign the 2018 Equitable Share Agreement for participation in the U.S. Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture Program. Joe Bosman, good morning, Joe.
Good morning, commissioners. Lieutenant Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. What I bring forward to you this morning is our annual agreement that we have to sign to continue our participation in the asset forfeiture program with federal government. What it does is it allows us to, if we play a role in some sort of federal investigation where property or funds were seized, we can then request maybe a portion of those funds or property based on our involvement. And we kind of have to keep an annual report of how much money we've taken in, how much money we've used out of that pot of money as well. So annual report this year has to be signed by the chairperson and ask him for that.
Move for approval.
Second. A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a motion to declare the walk-through metal detector rapid scan meter 250 as surplus for donation to Sanborn County Sheriff Office. Joe?
Hello again. So this is the older walk-through metal detector that was used at the courthouse. We recently have gotten a newer one a couple of years ago. So this is an older model. It's unused. It's still functional. The sheriff has kind of reached out to other law enforcement entities that maybe they could use it in their courthouse settings or for their law enforcement purposes. Sanborn County has expressed interest in obtaining it for free as is ready to be picked up.
Okay. Any questions? Motion?
I make a motion to approve that and then I have a comment.
Second.
A motion is second. Commissioner Barth?
I was at another county courthouse where there was a trial going on. I was there for a meeting of county commissioners. And the deputy by the metal detector said, "Are you here for the trial?" I said, "No." He said, "Well, just come around." Anyway, just thought that was subverting the purpose of security.
You looked honest. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 13 is consider a motion to approve the resolution to transfer surplus tax deed property, RDI 79945, to the city of Sioux Falls as recommended by the 2013 Surplus Property Appraisal Board. Mr. Les, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Les from the auditor's office. Thank you for carrying the bulk of my work for me there, Cindy. Yes, it's true. In 2013, we had a series of tax deed takings that were left over from the recession and the county wound up with them. As you can see from the document from the appraisal board, most of them were recommended that they be given to the city, which we did at that time. They weeded through and took a bunch of them. But then there was a few of them that they did not because of the legal, the legal process that those pieces of property were going through. Became apparent to us that RDI D79945 was cleared of all that and the city may be interested again in having that. So I got ahold of Roy Fletcher. They did a check on it and agreed to accept it. And that's what I'm here for today is to see if you'll take this resolution, sign this resolution, approve the transfer. And then just as a point of information, we are, we do have all the property in Minnehaw County that is tax deed that's been refused. And we're finding things out from way back in the past. We're reviewing those and taking them one at a time and trying to examine them. If something comes out of a questionable legal status, my office isn't notified. So we've kind of, got to figure out a way of finding these things out in a more, kind of a routine process. And I don't know what that's going to be. But like I said, right now, we're going back through all the county properties that are on tax deed and we're reviewing them. And we've got them tagged and we're doing them one at a time. It takes a little bit of time, but that's what we're trying to do.
Any questions for Bob? Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Bob. Item number 14 is a briefing on the Minnehaw County Safety Committee 2017 Annual Report. Good morning. Mr. Blomker?
Good morning, commissioners. Doug Blomker with the Office of Emergency Management. And I'm here on behalf of the Safety Committee this morning. As you know, we need to just briefly each year expound on what the Safety Committee's been doing, our functions and our purposes. So I'm just going to, for a couple of minutes, take your time and explain a little bit about what we do. We meet monthly, usually the first Thursday of every month, here in the county admin building. And in our meetings, we discuss liability claims, any injuries that have happened within the county, examine those, see if there's any way that that injury can be prevented to happen again in the future. We talk about any trainings that we have coming up. And we have a very active, very good group. And the members of the group, of course, are myself, Brian Monker with Facilities, John Trana with Information Technology, Scott Berg with Highway, Mike Batson with Sheriff's Office, Melinda Storey with the Commission Office, and Maggie Gary with Human Resources. And I would like to mention that Maggie's probably invaluable to us because she keeps us organized and keeps things going. So kudos to Maggie for all that you do and help us out with. Some of the activities that we do throughout the year, as I mentioned, we do trainings on a regular basis. Last year, we did defensive driving, slips, trips, and falls, fire extinguisher training, and back injury. Each year, we try and rotate that a little bit to keep the trainings fresh. There are a couple that we have to do on a regular basis, those being slips, trips, and falls and back injury. Because again, those are very common things to happen and we need to be sure our employees and county members are up on those as well. We also do safety inspections of all the county buildings on a regular basis. We do that on a rotational basis. Two of our members go out and inspect those buildings. We use a checklist that's provided for us to go through and make sure that everything is in compliance. If there are any concerns, we talk with our various department heads about what those concerns are and ask them to address them and be sure that they, they take care of them. In 2017, we, in April, the commission adopted a new safety manual. It was a revision that was worked on. The Safety Committee reviewed that revision several times before it came before you. And a lot of people worked very hard on that, especially also coming out of the HR department as well. We were also asked last year to review a policy dealing with difficult clients and disruptive behavior and specifically when the panic address alarms are activated downstairs. We went and examined all of those, checked them to make sure they were functional, and then also looked at the various departments as far as what their policies were with dealing with disruptive clients when they come in. We put those together. It came up with what we feel is a very good working draft. And each of the members of our committee reviewed that. And then once we felt satisfied with it, it's now sitting with Carol Muller and Carrie Dever. I believe it's going to be going to the department heads for their review and then possibly coming before you here later on for possible implementation into a safety manual or wherever we deem the best place for that to go with also. This last year, we also were able to raise our safety level award back up to the platinum level. That dropped three years ago due to a very high claim that we had. But we worked through that. We maintained our goal level and we were very pleased to see that we went back up on that. In order for us to achieve those things and get those levels, there's a number of things that we are required to do. The safety inspections, as I mentioned, having safe, regular safety trainings. We have to have an active safety committee. And then also, we have to attend a annual meeting, our safety conference, I guess I should say. And this last year, Melinda Storey and I attended that. That was in Mitchell. Next year, it'll be, I believe, in Pier, and then it moves to Chamberlain. So it's kind of on a rotational basis, but we are required to do that as well, to do that. And finally, every three years, we have to go through a loss safety survey. Doug Kirkus with Safety Benefits, and I started that last month. We went through four departments. We went through Highway. We checked with jail, sheriff's office, and facilities. Talked to them about what their safety concerns are, any things that we felt that they could improve on. Made them aware that there's a number of trainings that are available for them to start sending their personnel to. And also, a nice new added benefit with this is Safety Benefits is also offering a lot of online training now where our employees can go online. They can observe safety videos, very short ones, you know, anywhere five to 10 minutes long just to refresh them as far as anything that they're working with in their various departments. So it's a nice added benefit for them to do that. Probably the bottom line with all this is because we do all that and the hard work that we do, the South Dakota Workers' Compensation Fund provides us with a loss control credit on our final bills that we have to provide for this. And because we do all this, they credit us 9% back to the county because of the safety guidelines that we're following, the things that we're doing. And that amounted to $38,888 last year. And that's provided back to us with the hopes and intentions that we would invest that money back into further safety measures for our employees and further and add more trainings and work with them to make sure that we have our claims and losses and injuries down to a minimum of what we can do. And then finally, one of the things we do is we also have our many highlights that comes out and we provide a short article, safety tip in that each month to our county employees as well, too. So having said that, I will take any questions or anything that you have to say.
Any questions for Doug?
Doug, can you tell me a little bit, the 9% credit, is that extended to all of the people who belong to the municipal league? Or is it done based on our loss ratings of just an individual?
That is based, and I'm going to read off this again. I'm not an accountant here, so, but if I could read this here, and I'm just going to go verbatim for what Doug sent me here. It says, "Each member qualifies for a loss control credit. It amounts to 9% of the contribution. To qualify for the credit, a member needs to cooperate with loss control and make timely response to the recommendations that we make." So in other words, the, when we do the loss prevention surveys, if we are implementing the suggestions that are coming from that, we are credited with that plus having the other activities that we do. By contract, they have to conduct a survey with the members every, once every three years. And once we respond to the recommendations, we receive the credit for each of those three years until they come back and do another one. So that contribution is figured off, the final net of what our contributions were. So we started out in 2018 with, our original bill would have been $611,391. And because of contributions from the other members and from the activities that we're doing, that dropped our net down to $393,205. So it's quite a savings.
Okay. No other questions? Krista Bender?
I just want to thank you and everybody that takes the time to serve on that committee, because that, those are real dollars and more importantly, it's real effective work to keep our employees safe, so I just thank you.
This is a team effort. We've got a great group that come in and very spirited, and they all have great ideas and things that we want to do with this, and so it's not any one person, it's all, it's everybody there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Doug. The report was, it was short, but it was good. It was like, yeah, it was fun to see all these things that are going on behind the scenes that we don't always see, and so I appreciate that, and thank you for coming and giving the report. Okay.
Thank you.
Go on to item number fifteen. Authorize the Chair to sign the memorandum of understanding between the County JDC and the Compass Center for Collaboration Effects and Services, Efforts and Services to the Victims of Sexual Abuse and Sexual Harassment as defined by the Prison Rape Elimination Act. Jamie Gravitt, good morning Jamie.
Good morning Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. This is a yearly memorandum of understanding that we do with the Compass Center. They provide quarterly training for our staff in specific areas that address the Prison Rape Elimination Act. It could be something on transgender issues, it could be prevention things that we can adopt to make sure that none of our youth are being assaulted while at JDC and to prevent harassment. They also do trainings periodically through the year with our youth as well. The Compass Center is one of the places that our youth can anonymously make a report of abuse, and they also provide advocacy services for kids that come into our center and report any type of sexual abuse, whether it's at home or at another placement or any, anything that's happened to them, they come and provide those services for free, so. I'd ask that you authorize the Chair to sign the MOU.
Any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Kerski?
Thank you Jamie for the report, and I know from talking to Michelle from the Compass Center, they do some great work there. But this was, this is a great example of a higher authority legislating down to the county that you have to do this, and you made the comment that it, services are received for free. In reality, the county is paying for it, the taxpayers of Minnehaha County are paying for something that we were told and directed we had to do. And it is a great service, but it is, and it's provided by a wonderful organization, the Compass Center, but just kind of so people understand what's happening here and why it's happening, and it's all with great intent, but it's an unfunded directive that the county taxpayers get to take care of.
Correct.
Commissioner Bennega?
I would like to add to that comment. We all have presentations, excuse me, that we have heard from the Compass Center, and their recidivism rate of people who go through their program is exceptional. And frankly, it saves us money rather than having to have those individuals come back through the system if in fact they are charged again with something similar. And the fact that they are so successful with their recidivism is a gift, so to us, to us, it's really not free, as you said, but if we didn't do that, the cost would be significantly more.
I guess a better way of putting it is it doesn't have a budget impact for the Juvenile Detention Center. There, I know they do come to the Commission and request funds.
I'm going to add another comment to that whole, which everything is true, is that the Compass Center is a nonprofit, and they are also directed to do this by legislation, and they are directed to not charge us. And so they, they don't have an income, and yet they're legislated that they have to do these services. They do get money from the county during our budget season when we fund nonprofits, and because of the great work that they've done for us, we have increased, I believe, over the last 10 years, I believe we've increased that amount of money that we give them. But they are a very valuable service to us, and so yes, we're mandated to do it, but they're mandated to do these services for free, which is really hard, and they do great work. So, I think we beat that one. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve, second.
And motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is consider a motion to authorize the Highway Department to purchase, purchase two messaging boards through the State of Minnesota Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Number 124548. DJ Boothey, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This request is to purchase two message boards off the Minnesota State Contract. The State Contract is through Street Smart Rental in Lionel Lakes, Minnesota, and we've purchased our last two sets of message boards from this, from this vendor. The message boards will be replacing two that were surplus last fall. The easiest way to explain the reason for replacing those, the old message boards used an incandescent bulb and were more narrow because of the bigger bulb size. They had less letters that you could put on the message board, and so less words, less message. The new message boards are LED bulbs, a lot smaller bulb, and so you can create animation, you can create more, or larger words, they're just a lot more user friendly. The, the new message boards also have radar units installed on them, so we can use them for speed studies. We can give character feedback based off of a vehicle's speed as well. The price that was included in your bid packet was $20,995 each, or $41,990 for the two message boards. And just yesterday, we, we found out that we have an extra set of spare tire units on, on hand in our department, and so we would like to remove those from the quote. That was a total of $428, so the new price that we're requesting approval is $20,781 each, for a total of $41,562. And this is under the statutory bid requirements, and, and so we don't have to go to bids, but because our purchasing policy at the county requires the Commission to approve any purchases off of state contracts, that's the reason that we have to come forward to request this authorization. It is a budgeted dollar amount for 2018 for equipment purchasing. If you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Questions? Commissioner Burr?
DJ, so when you were contemplating your budget for equipment purchases, were you thinking of message boards at that point?
Yes, it is included in the 2018 budget for, for equipment purchases.
Additional questions? Motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr?
So, but $40,000, so you don't have to change a light bulb?
The incandescent light bulb is an old, old technology. It's not so much that we don't have to change the light bulb, we still, now we have to replace LED panels, and so it's not that we're not having to replace things. The, the performance of the new technology is much better and allows for better service for our traveling public.
Do you have any smudge pots left? Do you remember them?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Ball thing with a flame that comes out.
All out of fudge pots.
Them in?
They may or may not have been surplus.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you DJ. Item number seventeen is authorize a Chairman to sign the 2018 Sioux Falls Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement between Minnehaha County and the Southeast Council of Governments, CCOG. Carol Muller, good morning Carol.
Good morning Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you is a contract that you receive annually from, CCOG is the organization that coordinates that, for the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And this agreement allows us to be reimbursed for time spent on planning related to transportation, and those dollars are channeled through, some through Highway, and a little bit more comes through planning and zoning. So, we would ask for authorization for the Chairman to sign.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eighteen is a legislative update from Mr. Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. It's nice to be back home after a couple of weeks in Pier, working on your behalf. As with any legislative session, things are always in flux, and so bills can change very quickly. And as days pass, further understanding can inform updates that I'm providing you. So, this is the third update that you're being provided. Last week, there was the deadline for bill submission by legislators. It was unlimited bill submission up to that point. This week is the final submission deadline for bills. Legislators have three remaining bills at most that they can submit. So we should generally know what the overall size of the universe is, as far as bills that we're looking at. But going through a few bills in terms of highlighting, would just like to remind you as well that the Commission, at this point, has not taken an active stance opposing any legislation, but if you should choose to do that, you certainly have that authority to do. The main bill that the Commission is behind and supporting this session is Senate Bill 86, and that would revise requirements when selling surplus property through a broker. And after collecting signatures, the bill was assigned to the local government committee. Commissioner Karski was able to come up and testify in front of Senate Local Government. He hit it out of the park. In addition to his testimony, we received supporting testimony from the Municipal League, from the Association of Counties, as well as the Associated School Boards. We ended up getting a unanimous vote in committee, and it was placed on the consent calendar where it passed in the full Senate, 32 to zero. So, at this point, as far as legislatively, we're halfway through that process. We're still awaiting a first reading in the House, and then obviously, if the bill passes the House, we would need the Governor to sign that for that bill to take effect. But continuing to work on that, and we'll see how that process moves forward as far as dates for an additional committee hearing. Next bill on your radar is House Bill 1066, and that would revise certain provisions regarding the issuance of vehicle license plates and stickers, your license plate tags. As far as action that's been taken, the bill did pass out of House Transportation in an 11 to zero vote, and the bill specifies specific plates that county treasurers must have in stock. Now I will say, there's a little bit of uncertainty as far as our treasurer is concerned regarding the bill's impact. The SDACC lobbyists indicate, the County Commissioners Association indicate that the bill does have broad support, but again, we're continuing to look at that and monitor that, as with other bills, just to make sure that that uncertainty can have further clarity added to it. Then, House Bill 1076 would authorize townships levy authority for emergency medical services. And that is a bill that Emergency Management Director Lynda Young has been working on. He was up testifying in Pier last week amongst some other groups as well. Emergency Management is very supportive of that currently, according to the township's attorney. Townships don't have authority to levy taxes nor expend dollars to help support delivery of rural ambulances, certainly that can involve some life-saving medical care that people receive. So that bill did pass out of committee on a 13 to one vote, and tentatively, right now, is scheduled for a full floor vote in the House today. Then the next bill is House Bill 1157, and that would authorize certain alcohol manufacturers and wholesalers to enter into sponsorship agreements with alcohol retail licensees. The real impact of that bill would essentially, potentially benefit the Sioux Empire Fair in terms of receiving some sponsorship dollars from alcohol retail licensees. That's currently banned under state law. And Senate Bill One, this next bill is another bill where understanding of this legislation is evolving, like 1066. And so, in an initial conversation with the State's Attorney's Office, it was determined that there would be relatively minimal impact, but again, understanding of this bill is continuing to increase as time moves on, and I know that there are concerns from the Auditor's Office, as well as the Treasurer's Office, who would be directly impacted needing to administer any changes made by Senate Bill One, and of course, the Sheriff's Office would be impacted as well. So this bill has been deferred multiple times in committee. I think maybe as committee members try and get a deeper understanding of that bill. Couple other bills that we're keeping an eye on are in regards to tax increment financing. That bill has been supported tentatively right now by the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, and it appears that that bill maintains local control, that Senate Bill 58. And another bill that is generally amongst legislative priorities that the Commission approves, Senate Bill Two, in regards to workforce housing opportunities. Senate Bill 98 covers the 911 emergency surcharge, and Senate Bill 99 covers the sunset as far as that is concerned, as well as just making local governments and state agencies aware which wireless companies are remitting that 911 surcharge. Right now, there's a lack of clarity for the counties to know if, even though we have an increase in cellphone lines over time, people are dropping landlines, but 911 is not able to verify if they're receiving the appropriate level of taxes. So Senate Bill 99 would be a companion bill to Senate Bill 98. And then, lastly, another bill that is on the list of the Commission's legislative priorities that were approved back in the summer is Senate Bill 147, allowing local government bodies to establish per diem rates for certain commissions to be able to recruit and maintain membership in those boards. Lastly, I'd like to bring attention to one bill in particular, House Bill 1142. While this is not in your memo, I think this is an important bill to keep you updated on, and it would revise publication requirements for local governments as far as publishing minutes, as well as other legal notices. As you know, the county spends a significant number of dollars paying for different notices and minutes to be published in newspapers. We're talking in the low six-figure dollar amounts. And if passed, 1142, it is being really brought forward by the Municipal League, but if passed, the way that it would change the law is a rolling average of a 12-month subscription for newspapers would be taken. And if, at any point in that 12 months, a subscription drops below 40% of the county population, or the other local government entity, the local government could designate a website instead of paying for publication options, which could potentially save money. And so, there would be a couple notices still needed to be published in a newspaper, but that bill would have potential savings significantly for the county, over $100,000. And that bill is pretty vehemently opposed by the Newspaper Association, unsurprisingly, but that bill has not yet had a committee hearing, but I did want to inform you on that in case you determined you wanted to take any sort of action on that. Would be happy to answer any questions after this update.
Commissioner Kerski?
First of all Craig, thanks for the kind comments. I couldn't have done the job I did out in Pier without a lot of good notes from you and help from the rest of the Commission, so it was really a team effort. Senate Bill 98, really, we need to keep an eye on that, and I'd appreciate any updates that you get on that one. That's where we do, I mean, a large chunk of our funding for our Metro Communications, and it, you know, has, the sunset clause has a significant impact to our community, so make sure you keep us apprised of any ongoing stuff with 98.
Will do. Just so that you know as well, Senate Bill 98, and I believe Senate Bill 99 is being carried by Senator Peters, she's also served as the Senate Prime for Senate Bill 86, the one that you testified on.
Commissioner Burr?
You know, on Senate Bill 58, on the tax increment financing, the chamber favors it because it maintains local control. I assume they mean everybody except the county has some control on that.
In visiting with Deborah Owen, who is the registered lobbyist for the Sioux Falls Area Chamber, the chambers review did indicate that counties would maintain a certain level of local authority, but certainly, we need to keep an eye on that because legislation can change, and understandings of what the legislation can accomplish changes as well.
I doubt that the audience can see me rolling my eyes, but I'd like to bring up another one here Cindy, Madam Chair. That's the one on publications, and certainly understand the newspaper's objection to changing the rules on it, but being on planning and zoning, you know, we, applicants put up signs on the property that's being rezoned, we send postcards to the neighbors, we publish it in the newspapers, we put it on our agenda, and people come to our meetings and say, no one ever told them about it. And so it seems like all of these things are pretty futile. In fact, we've even had people call and say, you can't approve it because no one ever told me, because they only found out about it like while they were in Arizona. Anyway, you know, can we do skywriting, or can we, what else can we do here?
Fudge pots possibly.
Large fires, yes. In any case, I'm sure that the people that buy, you know, ink by the barrel will maintain their hold on this little nickel, but it doesn't seem, you can lead a horse to water. lead a horse to water, but you can't make it read. No, that's not the right line.
I had a comment on Senate Bill fifty-eight, and I believe this is, and you've written it in your notes too, but this bill falls under the approved legislation platform that the commission approved back in July. That's, isn't, is that one of the things that we discuss during our meetings with the city and the counties?
Correct, it is. There were some local municipalities, as well as
We've thoroughly discussed this.
City of Sioux Falls, and there were some changes in regards to tax increment financing, and there were some concerns that local control would be removed. But, yes, Madam Chair, you are correct that that was part of a broad set of legislative priorities that the commission did approve back in the summer.
Okay, thank you. So, we're well aware of what's in it, so. Any other question on legislative updates? Thank you, Craig. Your update stuff is very interesting, and it's quick to read, and so I appreciate what you're doing up there.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Number nineteen is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Karski?
Last Friday, Commissioner Benninga, DJ Boothey, Craig Dewey, and I toured a local contractor facility. We're still, you know, vetting the process of what, you know, our highway department could look like or should look like, best practices. Do we have an appointment to look at Lincoln Counties? Have we set that up yet, Craig? Do you know?
They're still being drafted.
Okay, okay. So, we're, we're looking at facilities, we're looking at best practices, just so you know that this is an ongoing thing, and it's still being worked on.
Okay, thank you. Additional liaison reports? Commissioner Burr?
Madam Chair, you and I both attended the Fire Chief's Annual Dinner the other night at the Courthouse Museum, and the outgoing president of the association, who'd served several terms, Mike Harstead, who I think he's, is he Crooks, or?
Crooks.
He's the fire chief at Crooks. Anyway, he commented that he really would not have been able to do his job without the assistance of Lynda Young, which I felt was... And Lynn was actually elected as one of the directors of that board, again. That's my comment.
It was well, well-attended event, and it was great. If you've ever got an opportunity to go, they feed you very well, and it's, it's really kind of fun. And just right, there was some very positive comments about what Lynn does for the association. I also talked to one of the firefighters afterwards, too, and he said, you know, we're very fortunate in Minnehaw County because they work together, and that is not necessarily the way it is in other counties across the state. And we need those associations to keep our rural fire, fire going, and, and those associations, like Ambulance Association. And they just talked about the extreme importance of having somebody over and above when there's infighting or discussions that aren't going well. They've always got Lynn to smooth things out and kind of keep things going, and so we're very lucky to have what we have. So, it was, it was good. Okay, one more, and that is just to give you an FYI, that I was invited by Department of Justice and the BJS to attend a, a meeting in Washington, D.C., in conjunction with NACO to discuss, it was a roundtable, the Sixth Amendment and our, our defense representation. And so, I will be attending that before Jeff and I attend the NACO conference, and so they are paying for my additional hotel space, and my airfare will be paid according to the, the NACO conference. So, I'll be bringing a report back about where that goes. And the NACO conference, I sit on the Justice and Safety Committee, and that starts the first week of March also. As soon as this, this meeting concludes, we'll go right into NACO conference, and so, that's coming up this next month. Item number twenty is new business. Is there any news business?
Good morning, Commissioner Boblitz, again from the auditor's office. I did want to report on a recent trip or excursion that Jason Toring from County IT and myself took to some election providers that are up in Minnesota. The, the, if I go, I'm going to explain a little bit about how they're tied in with Minnehaw County. Now, when, when all of you hand in your petitions that are running this year before March twenty-seventh, we'll take that information and upload it to the Secretary of State, and then they've got a vendor out there called B Pro that will forward that information to another provider called Election Services, Sea Change Election Services. And what Election Services does is they will program the election on, for our ballot tabulation machines and all of our, they used to do it for the Auto Marks with chips, but now we've got the new express votes, and they will, they will make sticks for them that program the election. They will be sent back to us for approval, or a mock-up, or a stick will be sent up to us for approval, and then we'll do that back and forth, and then they will mail the, the finished product to us. They also take that information about the ballot and who's on the races and all that, and send it down to Plymouth, Minnesota, to a, a thing called Sea Change Printing, and that is the place that our ballots are printed up down there. And we, so we toured both the facilities. We, we did the ballot printing place first, and then the election services second. The, the printing thing, I've been there before, but it was very interesting, and I wanted you to know that the, the ballot printing process and the way that they program our machines, in our estimation, is very secure. They were, they were very generous with the staff and workers that they supplied, and we had as long to, as we wanted to question them about security measures. The thing that kind of prompted this, too, was the elections in 2016. You know, it's my opinion at this point that the feds are ambivalent about doing anything for security about elections, so I felt it was, it was on us to go check this out. But as our, one interesting thing in the ballot printing process is they, they get their, their paper from one supplier, and they get their, their pulp from a specific location up in Canada. And you cannot take one of the ballots that we have and print that on a printing machine and, and run it through our machine. The machine will recognize that and spit it out. So, it's something along the lines of money. It's a specialized paper that the ballots are printed on. We, we quizzed them at length about, you know, any security breaches and how we could possibly, you know, somebody could possibly get in there, and without revealing too much of what they told us, I don't think it's good to have a lot of that out in the public. We come to the conclusion that the chance of an election in South Dakota are very, very small. The, the chances of somebody electronically altering the outcome of our elections are very, very small. The chances of somebody altering the, the media sticks that we do the ballot tabulation with and program our elections is very, very small. We just, the, the, Jason agreed that the moment that anybody could sit and try to hack something like that is so fleeting and so small, just maybe a few lines of code could be changed in anything that's being done, and, and we just didn't, we thought with the, the ability for the county to proof everything first, that it's, it's just, it's just not going to happen. I would tell you that the only way that some election in South Dakota is going to get hacked is if somebody does it, and, and there are, it's an inside game with two or three or more people involved on it, and even then, it's going to get found out. So, I'm, Jason Toring from the IT was very satisfied that going forward, we're going to be good in this next election cycle, as was I. But I did want you to know about that trip. ESNS basically sponsored the trip, even though they are not, they sent a representative from ESNS to learn, like we were, along with us to, to do the process. They were very generous in, in covering the expenses for the trip. Sea Change, like I said, was very generous, and, and the people they supplied and the information they supplied, they were very open about it. So, I just wanted to report to you on that trip. I do have one more thing that we are going to check out, and that is Secretary of State has a vendor called B Pro out in Pierre, and we're going to have a meeting out there pretty soon that is election-related anyway, and at that point, we hope to be able to have the same sort of treatment from B Pro and go over our election concerns with them, our election security concerns with them. So, that's my report.
Thank you.
If there's any questions.
Is there any other new business?
Madam Chair. Oh, sorry. Carol's coming.
Thanks, Bob.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller from the Commission Office. Two items I just wanted to bring up. One, we, this is the first week that we are working with City Link on Channel sixteen, and they are rebroadcasting our county planning and zoning meetings. So, we're pleased to have that. The meeting was a week ago yesterday, a week ago Monday. So, the week afterwards, they will be playing that, I believe, three times. So, we appreciate that partnership. They don't charge us anything for us, and it's absolutely great, and we recognize the value that that comes for public education. Other thing I want to mention is that next week, you, the goal is, the plan is to have before you the CMAR contract for the jail expansion. So, that's the significant contract for a lot of money for the contractors. The, it is a joint venture between Henry Carlson and J.E. Dunn, and final details, we believe, have all been hammered out. There's just a last review going through. We actually have placed this on Dropbox for you, recognizing that, I know you all want to read this, I don't know, one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and eighty-page document, and, but it is out there for your review at this particular point. So, we're excited. We're pleased that this is moving forward, and we'll have more detailed information for you next week.
Question for Carol. Carol, so where is our planning commission meeting posted? Is it on our county website, under commission, under planning, or is it just on City?
It's on the front web, webpage. Melinda, put that on there on the front, if you want to look at those times. And I do not know them off the top of my head. I just know it's three times this, this week. And of course, they're available twenty-four seven on our website also.
That's where I wondered where it was on our website.
I believe it's underneath planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Karski?
Carol, I'm not going to be here for the meeting next week, so I'll try to read the contract and take the quiz on it later. But does it, is that the contract that sets the final price for the building?
No.
No.
No, that is the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, and that will come back to you in a few months, and that will be the next time you'll see this information coming before you, because that's a, that's a major component of what we're doing, is the GMP. Yes.
Trying to remember the process. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner, Carol, are there any printed copies of it, or?
I have one. I have a whole notebook full of them, actually. I'll be happy to give them to you.
If you share, that would be great. Not that I really want it, but, yeah, it's easier for you to read than on an iPad, so.
Yes, I can appreciate that.
Yeah. Any other new business? Commissioner Burr?
I just wanted to comment that some associates of mine and I have gotten some sponsors for bills in Pierre to raise the taxes on alcohol and some, also some joint resolutions. They should be in there by Thursday, obviously, at the latest, but roughly speaking, one bill would raise the cost of a drink by a nickel, with all the proceeds going to the counties. The other would raise it by twenty-five cents, with the state getting half, the counties getting a quarter, and the municipalities getting a quarter. And so, we actually have sponsors in Pierre on this issue, and I think that, you know, despite their long time, you know, the fear people had of the alcohol lobby, I believe that they're a paper tiger at this point, and the tiger is on our side of the desk here.
Additional comments? Okay. Number twenty-one is old business. Is there any old business? Pretty much have nobody left in the room, so I would look for a motion to adjourn into executives, or not adjourn, but to move into executive session for the purpose of South Dakota Court of Fair Law one dash two-five dash two, parts one and three. Is there a motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are recessed until...